Good evening. Welcome to this candidate forum for the Dobbs Ferry School Board. My name is Susan Maggiato. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. We're very pleased to be partnering with the Dobbs Ferry PTSA tonight, as well as Disability Rights New York, which is providing both American Sign Language interpretation and live closed captioning. To see the closed captions, click on the "Show Captions" or "More" buttons on the bottom of your screen. Our moderator tonight is Kathy Meany, and in keeping with league policy, she is not a voter in the district. She is a resident of Austinang and a member of the Northwest Westchester League, and she is also president of the League of Women Voters of Westchester. We're very pleased to have her tonight. Our timekeeper is your own Lilly Williams-Amin, a Dobbs Ferry senior and a member of the River Towns League. Lilly is going to say a few words tonight. You may start, Lilly.
Sorry. Since 1920, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. The League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. The League is fully committed to ensure compliance in principle and in practice with the national organization's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Membership is open to everyone 16 years of age or older. I happily joined the League of Women Voters after representing the River Towns at the League's annual Students Inside Albany event. There, I met with Senate leaders and engaged with like-minded peers, learning and becoming involved with the state government. The conference helped me become a better-informed citizen and hone my interests. This year, I conducted a media literacy outreach project with the help of my local league. I've really enjoyed working with the River Towns' wonderful, dedicated members and hearing about the impact of initiatives in my community. As we're gathered here today to hear from candidates for the Dobbs Ferry School Board, I'd like to acknowledge the number of people involved in a single student's education. As a high school senior, I can attest that teachers, interns, security guards, custodians, and dedicated community members such as yourself, among others, are all crucial in supporting tomorrow's leaders. Tonight and in the future, I encourage our candidates to keep in mind and include the many voices that make the school system work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lilly. Following that lovely speech with some words about our recording policy, all the candidates have agreed to, only the entities authorized by the League may record or livestream this forum, and only licensed media, which includes TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who broadcasts your streams must do so in its entirety. This is to ensure that the content of the forum will not be manipulated in any way to create false or misleading impressions of any candidate. The forum will be recorded and available for later viewing on the League's YouTube channel, LWV River Towns, and we'll also put the link on the PTSA's website and the school district's website. There was no audience participation tonight. The questions the candidates will be answering were all submitted by members of the Dobbs Ferry community. A committee of PTSA and League members reviewed the questions. Our role was to organize them and combine them, questions on a similar topic, so we could include as many subjects as possible. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to our moderator Kathy Meany.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much, Susan. Once again, it is a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm delighted. Tonight, we have actually four candidates running for three positions on the Dobbs Ferry Union Free School District School Board. And in alphabetical order, your candidates are DeSamanne Davis, Suda Reddy, Mindy Walker, and Darren Wood. Now, let's go over, for the audience's sake, just a few of our ground rules that have already been reviewed with the candidates in its entirety. The order of candidates' opening and closing statements has been determined by the drawing of lots. The reverse order will be used for closing statements, and the order will be rotational during the question-and-answer period. Each candidate will have a maximum of one and a half minutes to present an opening statement and a closing statement. A question-and-answer period will include the questions from the public and has been reviewed by the PTSA and the League, just as Susan mentioned. The questions were not made available to the candidates before the forum. The moderator will have the right to rule on all questions and may restate the question. All questions must be answerable by all candidates, and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will be allowed two rebuttals in the course of the event. The rebuttal time is 30 seconds, and there will be no responses to rebuttals. The candidates may not interrupt each other or make personal attacks. The moderator has the authority to pause proceedings to enforce ground rules and format. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for each response. And again, closing statements are also a minute and a half. The timekeeper will hold up signs signaling candidates when 30 seconds remain and when to stop. A candidate will be permitted to finish a sentence once started. Candidates are expected to respect and comply with the time limits, and the moderator will strictly enforce those limits. So, let's now begin with opening statements. Again, as a reminder, you have one and a half minutes to give your opening statement, and good luck to all candidates. We will begin in this order. First will be Mindy Walker, then Suda Reddy, then Darren Wood, and then DeSamanne Davis. So, thank you. Let's begin. So, Mindy Walker, let's hear your opening statement.
Okay, well, hello. And first, I just want to say thank you so much to the League of Voters, Women Voters, for doing this. You guys provide such valuable experiences like this. And thank you to my fellow board candidates for coming together tonight to have this great conversation. So, about me, I've lived in Dobbs Ferry for more than 20 years. My husband and I have three daughters, and they have been in the school district since kindergarten. Currently, two of them are in high school, and one is in college. My work background is I work as an editor, a magazine editor, and currently, I'm the executive editor of The Week Junior. It's a news magazine for kids that delivers all kinds of fun topics. So, I do hope to bring my communication skills and writing skills to communicate to our community. I've also had the good fortune to do a lot of volunteer work with the schools, whether that's in the publishing room or the pumpkin fair. I also spent seven years with the Schools Foundation, working on the marketing campaigns, the annual appeals. But the main reason I'm really running for the board is I want to maintain our educational excellence that all three of our schools have and that I have seen in action with my kids. And I want to ensure that that happens for our students now and into the future, and making sure those decisions work for all students. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mindy. Suda Reddy, your turn.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTSA, and also my fellow candidates for joining this conversation today. A little bit about me, I've lived in Dobbs Ferry for almost 13 years, and I've been part of the school community the entire time. I have three children who attended the Dobbs Ferry Schools from Springhurst Middle School to High School. Two have graduated from Dobbs Ferry High School, and one is currently a junior. My kids really have received a wonderful education, and I really want to be on the board to continue to support and enhance the experience of all students in the district. Since we've moved to Dobbs Ferry, I really have enjoyed participating in many of the school and community activities, including volunteering for the PTSA and booster clubs and sitting on the foundation and other community events. My professional career, I have a career in public health, and I've worked for the New York City Health Department as an epidemiologist for 25 years. I really think that my experience in public health and working in government will provide me with excellent tools to contribute to the school board. I have strong analytical skills, and I believe in data-driven approach to make informed decisions that will benefit the entire school community. I've dedicated my career to enhancing community well-being, which I believe further supports my interest in helping with the school's functions to support the needs of the students and staff. I hope to join the board and learn a lot and really contribute to the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Suda. Darren Wood, you're next.
Thank you, and thanks to all the candidates. It's really inspiring to see so many people come out to serve their community and serve their district. A few weeks ago, I attended the Science Research Symposium and listened to Dobbs Ferry High School students present on their projects. Their research was extraordinary, a testament to their deep commitment to scientific inquiry. And their projects reflected their desire to build understanding that could alleviate pressing health, social, political, and environmental problems. I left inspired by our students and the remarkable teachers who support their growth and learning. As a teacher with over 20 years of experience, I know just how challenging it is to teach these days and how urgent it is to teach well. What I did not know three years ago when I first joined the board is just how much I had to learn about the running of a school district. I now understand how crucial experience is on a school board. I would like to think that my three years of experience will in some small way compensate for the loss of the terrific Jean Luc Casey and Sharon Stringer's many years of service, should I be elected again. I'm proud of the work we've done on the board these past three years. We protected the efforts of the district to create and maintain a positive learning environment for all students, especially those currently and historically marginalized, feel safe, included, welcome, and accepted, and experience a sense of belonging and academic success. That's from our policy 0105. We supported the district's adoption of a new curriculum to strengthen the reading and writing of every student in our district, and we delivered a rigorously scrutinized budget on time to voters for three consecutive years. As a resident and a parent, I would be grateful for the opportunity to serve again.
Thank you very much, Darren. DeSamanne Davis?
Thank you so much for this opportunity and to connect with all of the other folks running for the school board. My kids have grown up here in Dobbs. They're now in first and fourth grades at Springhurst, and we love this community. I want to join the board to invest my time to learn and make the most of this important role as my kids progress through the three schools in the coming years. In Dobbs Ferry, I volunteered with various committees in the school district and the village, including as a current member of the Dobbs Ferry Parks and Recreation Commission, where I've advocated for vibrant outdoor spaces, including the New Gold Park Playground, for sports fields, and for recreational programming for kids. I know that meaningful change isn't quick or easy, and I commit to following through in whatever ways I can. As the district continues to move toward a more data-informed culture, I think my background in STEM education and improvement will be a helpful addition to the board. This includes shaping the collection and analysis of meaningful data, including hearing directly from families, to inform decision-making on the board. I'm also a connector, and I want to strengthen the partnership between the school district, district leadership, and members of the community. For example, I helped the district to survey families when adjusting through COVID, analyzing and presenting data that informed the administration's decisions through meaningful community input. This district has so much to be proud of and so much potential, with great teachers, efforts underway to ensure all students will learn to read and write effectively, and the acclaimed International Baccalaureate Program. I want to do my part to invest in the best future for the kids of Dobbs Ferry Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, DeSamanne. So, let's now begin the questions for this evening. Question number one, we will start with Mindy. Mindy, what motivated you to run for the Board of Education, and what specific goals do you hope to achieve during your term?
Okay. I am motivated to run for the board, like I said earlier, about maintaining the educational excellence that we have. But our school, like a lot of other schools, faces a lot of challenges. We face challenges with money, challenges with space. And as someone who's gone through the district and been through all three buildings, I see how those challenges can affect our students. And so, we've made some great decisions, but we have a lot of big decisions ahead of us, and I believe that I could add a lot of valuable information to that. I would like to partner with our administrators to help with that. I believe there's also a lot of policy that we could set as a board into the future, from anything from AI to security. We've made some great strides, but I believe that those are crucial reasons to run, and I would like to help make those policies the best for our kids and for our community, make sure that we're partnering with our community for that.
Okay, thank you, Mindy.
So, I am very excited to possibly sit on the board. For me, it actually really was a call to service for me. I really enjoy being part of the school community and how that brings me into the community in Dobbs Ferry. I've always wanted to contribute to making things better for people, community, and our students. You know, we really have incredible board members. I know several of them who are currently serving, and I really would love to be a part of the team to support the school. There are a lot of challenges in this country today, and I know that our students are facing a lot of challenges with social and emotional health, and trying to manage their cell phone use and how to use AI. And so, I really am interested in working with the board and the administration to develop policies that will support the students, the staff, and the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren?
Yeah, I'm motivated to continue to lend my growing understanding of how the board operates. The learning curve is really steep, and I've learned just a huge, huge amount, which has really humbled me in great ways. So, I'm excited to kind of continue to learn and grow and to contribute that learning and growth and understanding to the board's work. I think I'm also motivated, as a couple other folks have said, at a time of great instability in this country, a time that's intensified challenges that always faced school districts, just to bring continuity and experience, I think, is really important. And as Suda said too, to serve, I think, is really beautiful in and of itself, to give time, and it is a lot of time, and to give time to support the interests of the students and of the district, I think, is really beautiful. Goals, it's interesting. Goals is a tricky thing to answer as a board member, because really, we're supporting the goals of the district. But I think we want to continue the work of the district to improve and to continue to work on how we communicate that improvement, our efforts to improve and support the learning of our students with our district.
Okay, thank you, Darren. DeSamanne?
Thank you. I think I'll echo a lot of what my fellow board members have shared, but I think I was drawn to this work fundamentally to participate in our democratic process, to bring voice to the community and build the connections between district leadership, the board, and the members of our community, who I think all have important contributions and views in the experiences of the school. I personally am really interested to learn more and engage in making policy that can inform the experiences of the teachers, staff, and students in the district, to make meaningful learning environments and social development environments for the community and for our students in particular, and to help make informed decisions, including collecting data that can help us inform whether the policies that we're implementing are meeting the goals that we set out for them, with the intention to evaluate and improve on those policies and those decisions over time, and to invest in that as a continuous and ongoing process as ways that we can center ultimately the social, emotional, and academic learning of the students in our district.
Thank you, DeSamanne. Okay, next question, we will begin with Suda. What board committees do you hope to serve on, and how will they best utilize your particular skills and experiences?
Yeah, so, thank you for that question. I think that my experience has been 25 years in government, working in a place that tends to have a lot of bureaucracy, so not so easy to necessarily get things done. And also, in my work in public health, I do develop and implement a lot of policies. So, I think that I would be most interested in and probably the most useful on the policy committee. I have a lot of experience kind of doing research and thinking about what policies make the most sense, what the resources that were given or that the school has available to them, and then trying to work with the administration on how to implement those policies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for other candidates to the current committees, it might be helpful just to hear the list. It's Special Education, Policy, School-Community Relations, Finance, Curriculum Instruction and Equity, Facilities, Student Athletics and Activities, and Audit Committee. Might be to be helpful in that. I think I'm interested in continuing to serve on the School and Community Relations Committee, which I think tries to do some really important work in developing stronger relations and stronger communication with the community at large, which is hard in a community where we have lots and lots of wonderful support for athletic, artistic, musical, scientific events on the campuses of the schools, but maybe less engagement in board meetings and in board communication. So, that's kind of a knot that I'd like to help continue to untangle. And the policy committee does some really, really crucial work for the board and requires a really deep attention to detail and awareness of all the different potential implications of one particular policy and the interactions with state and federal policy. So, having some experience, kind of being informed on the board about the work of the policy committee would make me interested to serve on that committee as well. And Special Education as well is a committee that I'd love to be part of in the coming years.
Okay, thank you, Darren. DeSamanne?
Thank you. I think I hold a particular interest in the policy committee, as I mentioned, toward building policy and then being very thoughtful about that policy and how we study and iterate and evaluate the policies that we have over time to ensure they're meeting the goals that we have. I'm also very interested in using my experience on the Parks and Recreation Commission for Dobbs Ferry. There's a really unique overlap between the fields that we have on the school district property with the village property, and that's not typical of a school district to be working so closely with the village. And I know that the village is very interested in strengthening those conversations and the ways that we use the small amount of green space that we have in the village to make sure our students have the sports fields they need. And I'm not actually fully sure whether that's facilities or community relations, or maybe both, but very interested to learn more how to use that existing relationship and help strengthen that for the district. And then finally, very interested in the Curriculum Instruction and Equity Committee, based on work I've done with the DEI Task Force and my experience as a STEM educator.
Thank you. Mindy?
Thank you, Kathy. The first one that comes to mind for me would be the Student Activities and Athletics Group. I have experienced, since COVID, I've been part of the Goal Club and helping head up that Goal Club, which is the booster club for the students who play soccer at the high school, which is about 60 to 70 kids. And it's been very exciting to see the participation really increase. And as a community, we've come together to make that a really great experience for the kids, but it's also given me insight in working with the coaches about what the needs are. And I think it would be great to see even more kids participating. I know in the letter, we got more kids are staying after school for theater, for sports, and that's fantastic. It's great to have kids staying after school, and I would want to help support the board make policies that increase that. I'm very proud to see how busy our school is after school. Related to the Student Activities and Athletics, the other thing I would add is activities. I think it's been great that we've added a debate team. We have a newspaper club. So, those changes that the school has made have been fantastic. I'm also so proud of the board. When you walk into our theater, it is enchanting, and that's because of the hard work the board did to get that remodeled. So, how can we think big? How can we think creatively for our facilities in other parts in our other buildings to make sure that we are using our money wisely to create facilities that really help our kids flourish?
Okay, thank you very much. Next question, we will begin with Darren. Do you support the school budget increase? Would you allocate any funds differently? And going forward, what changes would you like to see?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I would be in an odd position if I said I did not support the budget that we prepared to bring to the voters, but I do. So, the budget is the result of a really exhaustive process led by the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. The Finance Committee, we read for many, many hours before we determine if we approve the budget that should be taken to the voters. So, the budget is just a really, really carefully wrought instrument for the district. And the trade-offs this year were really hard to make. They were really significant, the reduction of seven positions. We are very, very sensitive to the impact that has, not just on the seven people whose positions are ended, but also to the program and the students who are supported by those positions as well. But the achievements were really significant. We maintained all student programming. We added a middle-high school reading teacher for both instruction and coaching. We added indoor winter modified track, support for the math program K through eight and the K through five reading and writing program, and ongoing professional development for staff. There are lots of cost drivers that are kind of beyond the ability of the district to control. We just kind of have to respond. And it's an increasingly challenging environment where the margins are just very, very small. But despite that challenging landscape, the result is a projected decrease in the tax rate for the town that's only become more significant with the addition of state aid, which we just learned about this past couple of days.
Okay, thank you. DeSamanne?
Yes, I'm also in support of the budget and the careful work that Darren and the entire board have gone through to get to this point. One of the things that I will point out is I think I really appreciate the district's investment that in implementing a new reading curriculum, they've invested in the staff needed to support the teachers to do that effectively, that the curriculum itself isn't enough. There's a lot that goes into that transition process, and we have fabulous, fabulous teachers. And so, being able to make that process effective and rewarding for those teachers that they have the support that they need and that students are able to realize that impact, I think, is really important and something that I would value continuing in the district. I really do appreciate the trade-offs the district is making, but I think maintaining the district at a steady budget over time and thinking towards our long-term goals is something really important for thinking about what some of those bigger projects are that we can do that make a meaningful change in the district over time.
Okay, thank you. Mindy?
Yes, I also support the budget. And I really do, reading through the newsletter that we got last week, I really do appreciate the transparency that the board has in talking about the very granular things that they spend the money on, including the transparency on a lot of our money this year is going to a legal settlement about events that allegedly took place 30 years ago. So, that had to be taken care of, and I appreciate that they were forthright about that. As far as budget for me, I know, I recognize that I would have a lot to learn in this area of budget planning and what Darren's talking about, all the reading, but I would take this responsibility seriously, and I hope to be able to contribute in a meaningful way.
Okay, thank you. You're on mute?
Yeah, I had to get my mouse to the right place. Yeah, thank you. Yes, I definitely support the budget, and I also just want to reiterate and applaud our board for the detailed and user-friendly report that we just got in the mail last week. I really found it very helpful to be able to review that line list of changes and how things were different from last year, and also, the graphics were really great. So, I really appreciate the efforts in communication and transparency. I too would have a lot to learn about what is involved in creating that budget. And I also understand, working for city government and also having to work within the confines of our budget every year, the need to really look at the activities that are being financed every year and having to prioritize the most important aspects. And was sorry to hear about the seven positions that had to be let go, but I know that the school was able to figure out how to fill those gaps.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with DeSamanne. DeSamanne, what do you see as the top three budget priorities, whether in the current budget or not?
Oh, well, that's an interesting question. I do, like Mindy and Suda, realize that I have a lot to learn in terms of the details of the budget. One thing I do know, having worked in a school, is that the predominant part of the budget goes to the staff, and they are the most important asset we have in our students' learning. And so, obviously, maintaining and prioritizing the staff, that they are valued in the budget. budget, and that they have the resources that they need to do their work, is of utmost priority. I think also making sure that we are fiscally responsible in the long term is a very important part of the budget and thinking not just about what we're planning for this year, but what things are coming in the future that we should be thinking about now and planning for down the line, so that we have both the immediate decisions and that long term vision. And investing, continuing to invest in all of the support services that support our students and teachers, whether that's special education, the staff, transportation, making sure all of these different pieces are aligned with the needs of our community and serving the students in the best way they can.
Thank you very much. Mindy?
Thank you, Kathy. So it's the three, the three things that we see as the top priority. Yes, okay. I would see definitely the staff, as DeSain said, that, you know, paying our teachers, benefits for our teachers, obviously, the operations of the of the building, of all of our buildings and maintaining them is always going to be a big priority, transportation and special ed. So I guess that's a very like high level way of saying priorities. And, you know, within that, it's like, are we, you know, choosing the right curriculums to invest in at the operations or staff level? So at a high level, that's how I would describe them, but I would also say, you know, facilities, like, are we are we choosing the right, are we doing the right things with the fields that we have? Are we making the the best decisions for transportation? Is it the most efficient? So that's, that's how I would see it at a high level, but I know there's many, many levels underneath that. Thank you.
Thank you. Suda?
Yes, thank, Kathy, can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What do you see as the top three budget priorities, whether in the current budget or not?
Okay, yes, you know, I would also reiterate what Mindy and DeSain were saying. I think, you know, obviously, we have to support our teachers and our staff. And so making sure that we are able to do that and pay them to teach our students, but also, you know, thinking about their professional development. I think that there there needs to be ongoing kind of professional development. As DeSain said earlier, you know, you can introduce a new curriculum, but you also have to make sure that you have the training for your staff. And then I I do think about the facilities. Our school is, it's an old building, and we have to make sure that we're maintaining that building and making any necessary updates that need to be made before, you know, it becomes a larger expense. So I think that's really incredibly important. And I also just really support all the, all the aspects of our, that go into our special education program, because I really think it's important to make sure that all students have equal access to a good education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Darren?
Yeah, and it's a tricky question to answer, because it's in some ways not really for Board members to determine budget priorities. And if, for example, if it were up to me, I might cut ice cream from the food service, so my middle and high school students don't eat ice cream with their lunch, but it doesn't really work exactly like that way. So we support the priorities that the administration articulates, and that's really the role of the of the Board in this budget process. And I do support the priorities that they indicated this year. First, evidence based training for faculty and staff. Second, investing in culturally rich and rigorous curriculum. Third, student support services, including expanded social and emotional learning opportunities in addition to contracts with our terrific teachers and investments in facilities, as Suda just said. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we will begin with Mindy. Given the budget increase in special education, what problems need to be addressed in infrastructure or programming for children with special needs? And in what ways could the district better support these students?
You know, I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat that question. That was it.
No problem. Happy to do so.
Okay.
Given the budget increase in special education, what problems need to be addressed in infrastructure or programming for children with special needs? And in what ways could the district better support these students?
So so the question is assuming there is a problem with programming and infrastructure? Is that the?
It's saying what problems need to be addressed
Okay.
in infrastructure or programming for children with special needs? And basically, how can the district do better?
You know, I feel like I'm not really qualified to answer that question right now. So that's, it's, I'm sure it's a great question, but I support the budget, so I support the budget increase for special education. If there are problems in infrastructure or programming, I'm not, you know, I would support looking into that through policy, or maybe we look back using data from other schools to find out what works, but I would, you know, count on our administrators to do that and support them.
Okay, thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
Suda?
Hi, Kathy, thank you. Yeah, I I do feel like since I haven't served on the Board and I'm not as familiar with the problems in infrastructure and programming, I do think that our, there's a special education committee, which I didn't mention as a committee that I'd be interested in, but I think I would really be interested in learning more about how to support the special education programming at Dobbs Ferry High School and or at the schools and possibly participate in that committee. But like Mindy said, I think really relying on the administration to to help us understand what they need from the Board to support providing education through special education so that everyone has equal access to good education.
Okay, thank you. Darren?
Yeah, credit to Mindy and to Suda for your responses. And it's hard, I think, in this moment to say like, oh, I'm not sure if we have enough context, but I feel that way too. And I would love to make a good faith effort to respond to this question. My guess is that this question came from a community member who maybe has a concern or questioned about how special ed is serving the needs of the community and the district. But it's just hard without more context and understanding of the problems that that the question alludes to, to know how best to respond. So yeah, kudos to the two of you. I think I agree, I'd wanted to have more information about the question before trying to respond. But do you have a lot of confidence in the special ed work that happens in the district? It's a really, really fantastic program, but we would also love to hear more from the community member if they want to reach out by email to the Board with more specific questions. I just invite them to do that.
Thank you, Darren. DeSain?
Yes, I will echo what everyone else has said on this matter. I do know that a lot of the special ed services that we provide are legally mandated, and the district does a really great job of filling those needs as those needs arise. And so my first guess would be that a large portion of what's in the budget is to meet the needs as they're articulated already for for the students in our district. One concrete thing I do know is that Springhurst has made a really big effort to communicate about the multi tiered systems of support and the first tier services that they can provide to students when when a struggle might be observed by a teacher in the classroom. And I think their increased transparency about that, bringing teachers into understanding that process and to understand how it's a supportive and a beneficial process for any student in the district is a really helpful thing that that has been going on. I can't link that at all to the budget or to what problems might need to be addressed, but I will say that that's one area that I know the district has been making really impactful improvements.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we will start with Suda. How do you think the ban on cell phones in the schools should be implemented?
Cell phones? So yes, thank you for that question, Kathy. So as everyone knows, the Governor just passed a bell to bell cellphone ban, which I think is a great thing that has happened. I totally agree that cellphone use among our students is a problem that does affect their social emotional well being. And so I think having a seven hour timeframe where students don't have their cell phones can be really helpful. It really is an issue that needs support from the entire community, the school, the parents, and the community to address. And the, you know, I think that the Board of Education will need to work with the administration to implement plans that can help carry out this law that was just passed, and will need to continue to evaluate how it's working and what might need to be changed.
Okay, thank you. Darren?
Yeah, the hot topic. As a teacher at a high school myself with a cellphone ban and as a parent of two cellphone wielding children, one in the high school and one in the middle school, and fortunately not yet our first grader, and as a member of this community, I can't really understand a role for cell phones in our schools that is not better met by students and families making use of existing supports like counseling and methods of communication that already exist. So I'm absolutely a fan of a cellphone ban. I am glad that the the school and the district waited until the Governor had passed its bell to bell cellphone ban, so we didn't kind of preempt what the Governor would ask the districts to do and then have to reconcile that in retrospect with the the guidance that came from the Governor. So I hope that we just continue to work really closely with other districts and policy experts, as the Superintendent already is doing, to come up with an equitable and evidence based plan to implement this policy effectively. And I do know that the guidance from the state also includes a requirement to do some demographic analysis of the impacts of this this ban on students and which students are in violation of the policy. And so I think there's some really thoughtful structures in place to make sure that this isn't landing in disproportionate ways in some of our, in some of our student body. But I'm looking forward to continuing to do that work for the rest of my term and would love to continue to think about that going forward.
Thank you very much. DeSain?
Thank you. Yes, my children do not yet have cell phones, so I know that I'm not yet there on the personal level, but as a former teacher who was still in the classroom when students had cell phones, I definitely support the bell to bell cellphone ban. Predominantly, I think, school already asks so much of our students' attention. We're asking so much of them to be present in their bodies and their minds, and we know that cell phones are a huge distraction, and not just to kids, but to all of us. And we, as adults, learn or or try to learn to regulate our cellphone use and when's appropriate and not appropriate. And I think that's really hard to ask of students when they're still developing, when they're learning to build those social relationships, and when they're in a lot of spaces where their attention is already spread thin. And so I think building an environment where we can focus on human to human interaction, building cohesion as a community is super important. As Darren mentioned, I think this emphasis on tracking the implementation of the plan is super important, because it's not just about implementing a policy, it's about making sure that that policy aligns with what can actually be implemented by teachers and staff and administration in the district, that it can be done thoughtfully, that it is not burning through a budget just to try to invest in something that's not working. Maybe we can trust some of our older students to learn a little bit of self regulation, and maybe that's not possible. But I think with iteration and tracking data over time, we can ask and answer some of those questions. And then finally, I think it's really important to build this in partnership with parents and families.
Okay, thank you very much. Mindy?
I'm very excited that this is, you know, the bell to bell ban is in place. I think it's fantastic. We're not the first state to do so. I think maybe we're like the eighth state to do so. So kind of what's good news there is that there is a lot of data that we can use from other states of schools that are of our size, that maybe face, that have our benefits and our challenges. And so we can look to that, use that data to figure out how to implement it. And so I think if I were to be a Board member, I would trust our administrators to, you know, look for those ways that really are going to work for our school district. I think what DeSain said about also like a lot of teacher input, this is, you know, it's going to be great that teachers aren't having to tell kids to put their phones away anymore, but it's also, it does create new challenges in enforcing it. And so we want to make sure that they are, that we get their buy in and their ideas. They probably have a lot of great ideas. Also, the older students will have ideas on that too. So I think, you know, it's follow the data, be thoughtful in our decision making for that, making sure that we're, you know, it is, it's a great, it's great overall, and I think we will make it a great, whatever we choose, we'll do a great job. We definitely need to be thoughtful in how we choose that. But there's data, so we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll begin with you, Darren. Research has shown a link between social media and mental health issues in children and teenagers. What is the responsibility of the Board of Education in addressing these issues?
Whoa, oh, gosh. That's a pretty big task to ask the Board of Education to take on. So I think the question might misunderstand a little bit the role of the Board of Ed, which is really to provide governance for the operations of the school district, but it's not really to make decisions, any decision at the level that might impact students' social media use or how that shows up in schools. So I think maybe that's an important way to start. And I think this is an issue that obviously we are very attentive to. We are reading regularly about research about the impact of social media use on student mental health. I don't know actually if the research is as conclusive as the question would suggest. And recent research from Lancet, which is a publication based in England, that studied the impact of school cellphone bans in British schools, finds not necessarily the the clear positive result that banning cellphone use during the school day is promoting, supporting, improving student mental health. So I think maybe just use this time to just signal some caution about our expectations. Like, I don't think that we should expect a cell, a cellphone ban in schools immediately to have significant impacts on student health. It's a lot more complicated than that. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. DeSain?
Great, thanks. I think, given the caveat that Darren mentioned, there's a few specific ways that I could imagine the impacts of social media being woven into our students' experiences in schools. I think one of those overlapped with some of what Mr. Slants has shared about the cellphone policy in terms of building student tech and literacy and students' critical thinking around online use and and social media. And I think we can invest more in the district in terms of what we expect and how that's integrated in schools so that students are having the opportunity to learn to be really thoughtful consumers of online information, including social media. I think the cellphone ban itself actually speaks to this as well, because it allows the school district to have specific conversations about students' experience with social media in or not in the school building, and then evaluating policies where students' experiences with other peers in and out of the school building are definitely the responsibility of the administration to engage in when that involves the health and well being of a student. And so making sure that the policies that the school district has are addressing those issues and maybe transparent to the community feel like something that I would be curious to to look into, to see what ways that we can help, you know, ensure and strengthen how the school district is engaging with social media use of of students.
Okay, DeSain, thank you. Mindy? You're on mute. There you go.
Would you mind, Kathy, just to repeat the question?
Not a problem. Research has shown a link between social media and mental health issues in children and teenagers. What is the responsibility of the Board of Education in addressing these issues?
Okay, thank you so much. So I would echo what Darren said, that the responsibility of the Board is to, you know, set policy with our administrators to help, you know, make sure that social media isn't affecting the mental health of our kids. And the good news is I do also believe that our bell to bell ban is going to help with that. If they're not on social media at lunch, if they're not on social media in between classes, then that is going to make a huge difference in their mental health, because they're going to be talking to each other and instead of taking photos and putting them on social media. So I do think that that is, you know, the Board will be addressing that when they figure out the policy for the bell to bell ban. And and I and I do realize that our counselors and our educators work with this issue a lot. It's a big issue for our school district, a lot of school districts, in making sure that, you know, kids do feel like they're have, that they're not having to live their lives online, that they're living it in person. And I appreciate all And I appreciate all of the work that our educators do when these problems arise, when there is a problem between kids about that, about something that was said on social media that causes a problem. I think that our, you know, educators really do make a make a big effort to solve it. And hopefully, the bell-to-bell ban will solve it even further. Thank you.
Suda?
Thank you. One of the problems going last is that you agree with everything that your fellow candidate said, but I I fully agree with what's already been said by all three of our candidates, all three of the other candidates. But yeah, it's, you know, the Board's role is really to work with the administration to set policy. And so, you know, I think the Board's role and kind of how students use social media, I think, is really working with the administration to think about how to limit technology or use of social media during the the day with the cell to cell to or bell-to-bell cellphone ban, that will certainly help. And also, just like, you know, education of our students, of our community, about social media and the impacts that it has on mental health, educating our teachers and really kind of professional development so that they can help recognize when there might be issues that come up in the school and and working with them, the staff and the students to really try to recognize and take steps to address mental health issues.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we will begin with DeSain. What would you do to improve sports, athletic programs, and athletic facilities in our district?
All right, thank you so much for that question. I will start by saying I have learned most about this so far through my work in the Dobbs Ferry Parks and Recreation Commission because Dobbs Ferry student athletes use Gold Park in particular for both baseball and football, as well as using Memorial Park Field extensively and the soccer fields by the waterfront some amount. And there's a really tight partnership. I know that folks in the community also want more from our athletic facilities and that our space is really tight. And so I would start by saying to improve those things, I think, increasing the dialogue that we're having. We've had some really great meetings where we've brought community members in to talk with the commission about their concerns, about their needs, and it's opened up some really exciting conversations to think about the future of the district or the future of the sports. And I think it would be really important to have those conversations in partnership with the district. Because my kids are not at that age yet, I'm not ready to say which thing would be the most important to improve at this point in time. But I do really think I bring the skills to bring folks together, to have those conversations and make the hard choices that we have to make with the data that we have and building in those long-term plans to make the time and the space and the money over time to move towards a vision that can realize all the things we want and not just making short-term decisions, piece by piece.
Okay, thank you. Mindy?
Thank you, Kathy. I am so glad that we have more kids participating in sports and athletics across the board in the middle school. It's been great to see it's our first flag football team this year, and I think there were like 30 girls that came out for that. We have so many more modified activities now than when my oldest was in middle school, and that is fantastic. So it's great to see that, but you're right, we, what are we going to do to make sure that we can manage all of that? I think one thing, maybe we do an audit where the Board, you know, not the Board, but working with the administrators decides, okay, let's do an audit of where are we, we know from our community, and we can work with the community too to find out where we feel like we could improve. But maybe doing an official audit might help with that to really see where the holes are and help us make a thoughtful, you know, data-driven decision on that. I do agree that we're going to have to be really creative, like maybe we could move the Hudson River over a little bit, I'm kind of thinking, you know. If we just had a little more space, right? So, but no, in all seriousness, we do need to be creative with our space and agree with DeSain on partnering with our community. We're such a tiny village and we don't need to be two different silos of village, village governance and education governance. And we should be talking to each other. It will only improve the community, both for the school and the community, if we really are more in lockstep together than I'm actually not sure if we haven't been before, but I'm sure we can kind of grow that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Suda?
Kathy, can you repeat the question?
What would you do to improve sports, athletic programs, and athletic facilities in our district?
Yeah, so again, you know, if I'm being on the Board, I think, you know, our role is to is to really work with the administration to set policy and review the budget and make recommendations about how to implement those things. And so I think it's really thinking about what athletics we have, where we can expand. Like Mindy mentioned, it's really been amazing to see how many more athletics have have come into the school at the modified level of the middle school and also at the high school level. So I think working with the administration and the community to think creatively about how we can get the students more involved in athletics. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Darren?
Yeah, thank you. I think maybe there's a question to come about music and drama, or maybe it's just about athletics, but there are just so many activities that our students engage in that are that are worth celebrating. And it's really impossible not to be wound, go into an athletic event, a music event, drama. There are just so many ways to celebrate our students who are doing such terrific things. And our facilities, I think, look really terrific. If you walk around any of the athletic facilities this spring, I think they look really, really great. And there have been significant increases in offerings too, that I think are worth celebrating. In particular, unified sports like unified basketball, which allows students who historically have not been able to participate in athletics in our district to participate, which is really, really a great way that we are living kind of our mission to think about diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district. Bowling was huge too, what it hit bowling was. So there are lots and lots of students increasingly involved in sports, which is awesome. So even though the question is about kind of improvement, I think we are already improving sports and athletic facilities in lots of great ways. And I think, as someone mentioned, to continuing conversations with stakeholders, so the parents and the students who are really invested in sports is a really important part of this process. And also the recognition that space is tight, so the resources that we have in the district, until we move the Hudson River, as Mindy suggested, just a little bit, just like a little squidge, it's going to be require some creative problem solving to think about how we can expand and improve upon our facilities.
Thank you. Okay, next question, we will begin with Mindy. Mindy, do you think that the district-wide safety and emergency management plan addresses school security while taking into account the mental health needs of the students? Why or why not?
I want to start by saying I really appreciate the security that goes on at our school without us even realizing it. I remember when I attended an event that Mr. Slence did, and he was talking about changes he made. And he said that if you pull your car up to the middle school to pick your child up, and if you're eating a salad in the seat while you're waiting, we can see the lettuce in your teeth. And I was like, wow, okay, there's a lot of security here. And so I think in some ways, we do a terrific job of providing security that our kids don't even realize. You know, they know I have lettuce in my teeth and I didn't, I didn't know that. So I think that when it comes to the lockdowns and the, I'm assuming that's what this this question is about, the different drills that we do. I, you know, for my own children, I feel like my experience is that they are done very well and it's not stressful. But I would be interested to learn more if if our administrators are hearing that from students or from teachers, then maybe that's something that the administrators would want to look into with the Board about. So, but I do think they are necessary. I think we've made some great improvements. I'm happy to read in the newsletter that we added the vestibules to the middle school, high school, the way we did with the Springhurst. So we're following state law there and for security, and I think that's terrific. So I think in my experience of being with the school district, every year we've made we've made changes in making it secure with that in a way that maybe I don't feel when I walk in the door or when I pick up my kid.
Okay, thank you. Suda?
Yes, thank you for the question. I mean, I think that the school does a really good job with the security measures that they have in place at Springhurst and Middle School and the high school. I'm sad that we live in a time where we have to do lockdown drills, but I do think that the school does a really good job communicating with the parents too when there is a lockdown drill. And I think, you know, that's really useful because you can have a conversation with your child about it. So, and I think they've just generally done a really good job putting security measures in place and always looking to improve.
All right, thank you very much. Darren?
And can I take a piece out of Mindy's playbook and just ask you to repeat the question to you? I just want to make sure.
Not a problem. Do you think that the district-wide safety and emergency management plan addresses school security while taking into account the mental health needs of the students? Why or why not?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I think, I mean, the the plan's first responsibility is to think about safety and preparedness. So I think it does meet that responsibility really well. And it meets that responsibility because I think Ken Slence, the super, has met that responsibility that responsibility really well too. He's the only superintendent I've I've had the fortune to work with. I've only worked with him. But he's taken school safety really, really seriously. He really, it is just a top priority for him. And that's been expressed in the forms of numerous practices of drills according to state law, but also tabletop readiness drills and communication with law enforcement in Dobbs Ferry. So I think the school is in a really, really good place. The school district is in a really good place. I think also teachers do a really good job, in my experience as a parent, of contextualizing the experience that students will go through as they go through a drill. And it, of course, looks really different for our first grader than it does for our 10th grader. But I think there's a sense of safety that the teachers provide and communicate too in those moments where there is a drill. And I think for kids to experience any kind of psychological safety, they first, or maybe not first, but they they need to be in a school where they feel physically safe in the event of an emergency. So I don't know if increasing preparedness and school safety has a negative impact on student mental health. That seems to be implied by the question. But I think it's, again, one of those questions I'd want to know a little bit more about too, and to understand who's asking the question and what experience they're drawing on, to understand better how to respond.
Thank you. DeSain?
Yes, thank you so much. I agree with a lot of what other folks have shared. And I do understand that much of our safety and emergency plant management plan is mandated by the state. I will say for the recent safety management plan that was shared out, I really appreciated, and I think this came from the state level, that the policy had a period of time for public comment. And I think it was really cool to see that that system is in place and maybe something that our district can use more broadly. But speaking directly to the question, I think a lot of what I could imagine might have mental health implications for students is mandated currently by the state. And as a former teacher, I have my own opinions about lockdown drills that would be beyond my role as a board member. But asking those questions, having conversations with community members, understanding what concerns students are presumably coming home with, I think would be very important in terms of having conversations about how we iterate on the parts of the policy where we have agency as a district and as a board to ensure that our students are comfortable and safe in the schools and that we're meeting all of the state requirements that we're required to do.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we've now come to our final question for this evening, and then we'll go to closing statements. So we will begin with Suda. Suda, what do you see as the Board's responsibility in advocating for individual students when approached by parents regarding matters that have escalated?
So, you know, I think that the purpose of the Board is to be present for the community and listen to people and give a voice to the community and bring those concerns to the Board and to the superintendent. But really, the Board has, their main functions are to set policy that the administration implements in the school, make hiring decisions and approve the budget. But I do think our role as board members are to really be the voice of the community, try to be transparent and communicate both to the administration and try to communicate back to the community.
Okay, thank you. Darren?
And could I start again just by asking you to repeat the question?
I know it's getting a little late. I understand. Okay. What do you see as the Board's responsibility in advocating for individual students when approached by parents regarding matters that have escalated?
Gotcha, and advocating for particular students?
For individual students.
When parents raise a concern that is escalated. Okay, gotcha. Well, yeah, and as Suda alluded, the the role of the Board is not to advocate for for individual students who have individual concerns nor parents. And I think it's it's really hard because I think one of the most challenging experiences that I tend to have as a board member is when parents come to the Board with the assumption that we can kind of do something, we can make decisions, we can solve problems, we can resolve and respond to concerns. And really, the our role is really restricted to making sure that we connect that parent to the right person in the administration, in the district, to share that concern. And that can be really hard because I think parents in the community have the experience of perhaps voting for us as candidates and thinking that that we are therefore their advocate or their representative, when really our job is to make sure that that concern gets connected to the right person in the district, in the administration, who can respond. And we will often kind of supervise and kind of watch that conversation unfold and make sure that it comes to some sort of resolution. But we don't have any role in advocating for for particular concerns. And that can be really hard. I think that's one of the hardest parts that all of the board members, I think, and I would agree, that's one of the hardest parts of of being a board member. But we do take those concerns really seriously, and we always want to have those concerns shared with us. I think one of our concerns on the Board is that often there are concerns that students and families have that we just don't ever really hear about. You kind of hear it simmering in the district somewhere out there. So we still very much want to hear those concerns, but our role is restricted to just directing that to the person who can respond best.
Okay, Darren, thank you. DeSain?
Yes, thank you for this question. I do agree, it's, you know, very important that as a board member, I would listen to any individual with a concern, validate their concern and engage with them while also doing the important roles as a board member. One way that I think we can bridge these things is to have processes to integrate the feedback that we're hearing from individual community members so that we can better look for patterns in those behaviors that are happening. We're a really small district, and so it can be easy to see that each event feels like a single occurrence happening to one child or one family. But I think we, as a Board, have a duty to look for trends in those experiences and look for what those can tell us about areas where the district can improve in meaningful ways. I also I know that that Mr. Slence had mentioned wanting to hear from parents who are paying for outside support for their kids so that the district can better understand the gaps that the school is not providing and and be better able to address those gaps. And I think that's one example where we know the district is already moving in this direction. And I think the Board can be a really important conduit for collecting not just individual stories, but those collective patterns so that we can speak to parents and families' concerns as they impact the district overall.
Okay, thank you. Mindy?
Thank you. So yes, I think it's important for us, like everyone here has alluded, to, you know, listen to our community members, listen to parents and hear what they have to say because it's important for us to kind of understand that mood, but also, like others have said, it's also important to connect them to the right person at the school who can help them, who has the experience, who under, you know, who is trained to to help with these problems. And so we can facilitate that and make sure that 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 line of is communications open. I know the school also has a lot of resources on what the, you know, how you, the chain of command for how you, as a parent, if you have a concern, if those concerns aren't being met, it's important. as a parent, if you have a concern, if those concerns aren't being met, it's important for us to hear about them. But I agree, we want to work as a team, we want to work as a as a group to solve things. And if we're, you know, individually solving all these millions of things, it's not really going to support us as a whole. It's not going to bring us up as a community where we want to, it's going to make us feel like we're just like individuals in this, and we're not, we're in this together. And so I think it's important to 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 not see, to see the board as helping the community as a whole. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that concludes the candidates answering questions submitted by the community, and we will now continue with closing statements. As a reminder, you have one and a half minutes to give your closing statement. And as stated earlier, we will reverse the order for closing statements. So, Desan Davis, we will begin with you.
Great, thank you so much. Um, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, um, for this opportunity for us to engage in this democratic process of of voting for our school board. And I really hope folks will come out and vote, um, be a part of the community, um, and uh, advocate for what you want and demonstrate that that you're paying attention and and invested in the future of our school board. I think that's so, so important. Um, for me, as a candidate for the school board, um, I want to do my part to invest in the district and realize the full potential of the great teachers um, and staff that we have in Dobbs Ferry, of our efforts to expand literacy to all students um, and to continue invest in um, our IB program, including expanding it to the middle school. Um, again, um, I think my role on the Parks and Recreation Commission um, both speaks to my experience in being able to work through um, solving um, decisions for the community and bringing in community voices over time. Um, and as a STEM educator and improver, um, I commit to collecting and using data that can inform our decisions and policies around district improvements and continue to revisit those over time. Um, I also commit to centering students' experiences in their learning and in their day to day experience in the school as the core of what's important. Um, and I commit to strengthening the relationship between the school district and uh, the village um, as we continue to have conversations as parents um, from our students directly um, and collect that feedback so that we can make our school district be the best that it can be, um, building on uh, all of its current strengths and realizing its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Desan. Darren?
Yeah, I first want to say that I'm just so humbled by the wealth of experience represented by the candidates tonight and so grateful for their willingness to serve. It is a huge amount of time and a huge service. Um, so this evening just feels like a moving testament to public service at a time when there's increasing skepticism nationally in public institutions. Um, so I just want to start by saying thank you to all. Um, the role I found is challenging and the learning is really steep. Um, there doesn't really feel like a great way to prepare for the role. It's really a year or two, in some cases even three years of learning. Um, so part of what I'm excited to to continue to contribute is um, just making use of that learning that I've been able to do these past few years to continue to support the great work of the administration, the staff, the faculty, and its students. Um, so um, I'm hopeful to find even more ways to build more effective and evidence based ways of hearing from community members. That's something that I think we've really um, struggled to find ways of of doing that in reliable ways. Uh, but we really want to build um, strong, powerful partnerships with parents, with students in the district uh, to make sure that the district and the school is serving our students best. Um, and just on a personal note, I'm kind of moved every time I go to a board meeting in the hopes that I'm contributing in some small way to making the district a great place for my three kids. Um, and by extension, all the kids in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Suda, ready?
Yes, thank you. Um, just want to uh, express huge thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting us and also to our candidates. I really enjoyed the conversation and they were all uh, really great questions. Um, I have always felt that the Dobbs Ferry schools, ever since we moved here, really are incredible. And I've experienced it firsthand with my three children. And so I really am so excited to possibly serve on the Board of Education. Um, I know I have a lot to learn, um, but I think I am someone who really likes to learn and my background in public health um, really will um, contribute to the Board of Education, uh, my connection to the community um, through my children, through friends, neighbors, and my participation in the village. Um, uh, I think will really help to uh, make me a successful board member. Um, I really understand the importance of hearing all views. Um, each and every voice only improves our community and what our schools have to offer. Um, and I'm comfortable working towards real solutions for complex issues. So I'm excited to um, to serve on the board if elected. Thank you very much.
Okay, Suda, thank you. Mindy Walker?
Well, yes, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. This has been some really great questions and thank you to uh, my fellow candidates. Um, I would be so honored to serve on the board. It would be, you know, I do, having lived here for so long and seeing all the great changes in the way the Dobbs Ferry schools have evolved, it would be great to even take it further into the future, both for today and at, you know, for the kids who are in kindergarten right now, what is the high school going to look like for them? And um, you know, I would love to see us even do more with our communication. I know that um, so many amazing things are happening in the high school. We have so many great kids doing things. And I know that when my kids were at Springhurst, I would have loved to have heard about all those things the high school kids were doing because it's a real sort of window into your future. And so I think there's ways that maybe we can work on that as a community to bring us together so that the kids, the families in Springhurst really see, see their path. And and because we are doing terrific things. And um, it's exciting to help be a part of our administration as they help, you know, make our schools a happy place. And not just a happy place for the kids, but for the teachers and the staff. Because if they're not happy, the kids aren't going to be happy. So, and that might be investing in professional development or providing, increasing our facilities. So there's many ways, you know, you can define happiness. But when we focus on that and it really does in improve it for the schools. And I would be just honored to have the opportunity to learn. I I totally understand for um, and agree with Darren that I know it would be a big learning step, but I would be um, thrilled to invest my time in this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes the forum for this evening. I would like to thank all of the candidates, Desan Davis, Darren Wood, Suda Reddy, and Mindy Walker. I'd also like to thank the audience for attending this evening, the League of Women Voters of Rivertowns, and of course, the Dobbs Ferry PTSA. We appreciate your putting this event together. So just remember, the school board and the budget vote is Tuesday, May 20th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And my last final words are to get out and vote. We need your vote. So thank you all and good night.